Jacket?
Okay, let's see.
Oh, who's throwing the, um, flag salute? Okay.
When you got the reverend, right?
Which reverend? Who? In the back?
Next to the tall guy, dude. Is there any, uh, pastor or something?
No, no, let me see. Um, Eric, okay.
You guys, first.
Waiting on you.
Okay. It is six thirty-ish. Six forty. I'm gonna bring this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask a Madam City Clerk to give the roll call, please.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Suarez.
Present.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Present.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which is gonna be led by Councilwoman Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. And we also have a word of inspiration by Pastor Magalini from Hope Chapel. Please join us.
Gentlemen, please remove your hats. Place your right hand over your heart and recite along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council staff, everybody. It is indeed an honor and a blessing to be here tonight. I just have a scripture and a brief prayer. The scripture's from First Timothy, chapter two. And it says, "I urge you then, first of all, that requests, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving be made for everyone, for kings and all those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness." Let's pray. Father God, we do acknowledge your presence here tonight and, in your presence, as fullness of joy as your word promises. Father, first, as we stand before you, I wanna personally pray for the family that lost loved ones today in the school shooting in Wisconsin. Grace, mercy, peace, Lord God. You are the God of all comfort. You promised that, so we ask that that comfort would be with them this moment, tonight. But we thank you for this evening, Lord, as we gather in the heart of the South Bay. We thank you for all that you have planned tonight. Pray that you would lead, guide, and orchestrate. We thank you for those that you've chosen and raised up for such a time as this. I thank you for the leaders of this community, Lord. We know that they are handpicked by you for the benefit of the people of Lawndale. Pray your grace and mercy and wisdom, protection, Lord, everything they need to make decisions that honor you and indeed benefit the people of this community. We commit all the citizens of Lawndale to you, Lord God. Ask that you would protect them, encircle them. We thank you for the children, the seniors, those that you've raised up to protect and serve us. May you protect them as they protect us. We commit this evening to you. We thank you for your peace here. I personally pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Firstly, I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight to join us in this special occasion, this special council members. We have a lot of family and friends. Tonight, we got a program. It's a slash council meeting, if you will. We will take a break and have a reception. It's a little free-flowing, you know, if you will, but that's how we do it, right? And we have fun while we're doing it. Okay, with that being the case, we're gonna do our first item of business on the agenda. If you had an agenda previously, it had been modified just slightly, so you may not be able to follow me. So our first item on our agenda's gonna be a presentation to our outgoing council member, the Honorable Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. We're gonna receive a few presentations. Is there anyone here that's gonna provide a presentation? I know the county supervisor, Holly Mitchell's office, will provide a presentation. So let's do this first. Let's do the, let's do the city council. We have a presentation. And then we're followed by the L.A. County Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office and any other agency that would like to make a presentation can do so shortly after that. I believe Congressman Maxine Waters' office as well. Okay, great. Okay. I'm gonna read this little information real quick. December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, city council meeting, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, Lawndale City Council member from December twenty twenty to December twenty twenty-four. She also served as the Lawndale City Clerk. June twenty sixteen to December twenty twenty, Councilmember Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. She was born and raised in Lawndale, a long-life resident. She graduated from Lawndale High School, and she married her husband, Joseph Gordon, and raised her children here in the city of Lawndale. Rhonda's family, get this, has had a long history of service in the city of Lawndale. Her father, Harold E. Hoffman, you may have heard of him, have served the city for thirty-three years. Ten years as a council member and the remaining twenty-three years as mayor until he passed in twenty thirteen. On May nineteenth, twenty fourteen, the community center, which is right across the street, was renamed, was renamed the Harold Hoffman Lawndale Community Center in her father's memory, recognizing his outstanding, distinguished public service in his hometown of Lawndale. Now, Rhonda's mother, wave your hand, wave your hand, Ms. Hoffman, Doris Hoffman, was bestowed the title of First Lady Emeritus after Mayor Hoffman passing, again honoring the family's commitment to the city of Lawndale. In June twenty twenty-six, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman was anonymously, anonymously selected by the city council to fill a vacant seat of the city clerk by a special appointment until the next election would take place. In twenty eighteen, Rhonda successfully ran for the elected position of city clerk and continued to serve in that capacity. In twenty twenty, Rhonda successfully ran for an open seat in Lawndale City Council and was elected to the city council. She served the city council as a city council member from December twenty twenty until December twenty twenty-four. Now, during her time on the Lawndale City Council, Ms. Hoffman-Gorman served in various capacities, including on the city ad hoc and standing committees, as well as some of the inter-agencies, government agencies, as noted below. I'm just gonna name a few of them. She served on the city and the school board standing committee, the Cowal Transmaintenance Subs Committee, the Parking Traffic Solution Committee, the Fireworks Ad-Hoc Committee, that's a fun committee, as well as the Metro Sea Line Extension Committee, that's really fun. And she's also served as art representative on the California Contract Cities Association as a Board of Directors alternate, as well as a member of the California Contract Cities Association Legislative Committee member. And she also served as, on the Board of Directors, as an alternate on the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. On behalf of the city of Lawndale, we want to present this plaque to the outgoing council member for her eight years of service and her dedication to the city of Lawndale. Now, that was the official script, so I just wanted to read the official script. But notwithstanding the official script, I want to say to my colleagues, Rhonda, that I appreciate you. Over the past few years, eight years, well, even when you was a city clerk, but even more so when you became elected as a city council member, we had an opportunity to work even closer together on issues. Now, we don't always agree. We don't always agree, but we have developed a professional friendship that goes beyond just sitting on this diocese every two weeks, right, and making decisions on behalf of the, of the community. And we've learned the art of compromise, right? And I appreciate you for that, Rhonda. I appreciate your family service, and I appreciate your service. And I know we haven't heard the last of you, and we appreciate you. So we got a little plaque. Now, we're probably one of the only cities to have a wood shop in the back, so we made these own plaques. We make our own plaques. Inglewood probably, I only say that because I know Inglewood has one. No, Inglewood is the only city, beside the city of L.A., to have their own wood shop. But we wanna present this to you on behalf of the residents here in the city of Lawndale and this entire city council. Anyone wanna say a few words? We'll take a picture. We're gonna take a lot of pictures tonight. Is that all right, everybody? That's all right? You wanna say a few words? Okay, let's take a picture. Why don't you say a few words first, and then we'll take a picture? So then when we come back, we'll, we'll keep, keep it flowing.
All right, I'm going to try to get through this with out crying too much. I wanna start by saying thank you to the residents of Lawndale for all their encouragement, love, and support that I have received. I am so proud of this community that we all call home. I will always be grateful for the many citizens that have taken the time to voice their concerns, their opinions, and their success stories when dealing with our city hall and staff. It has been said through the years that the people are the city in Lawndale. And that is something I hold in my heart, because the focus must always be on the people that live here and the quality of life in which they enjoy. I also wanna wish, I also wish to thank the city staff and department heads for making sure our city is well taken care of. When I have received a citizen's request and relay it to city hall, it is always handled in a timely manner, and the situation is resolved for that resident. I am so very thankful for the work of this incredible team. To our city manager, Mr. Sean Moore, there are times when I walk out of your office and I think all I've done is complain and growl at you, but you always remain calm and encouraging. You've always heard me and taken care of those issues, issues to the best of your ability. Thank you for your leadership, your love for our community, and the dedicate, your dedication to keeping our community safe and well-maintained. I've told you before, we are truly fortunate to have you at our helm. I don't think I have ever seen a city manager that is as devoted, excited, and ready to serve a city the way you serve ours. We, the residents, are so truly fortunate to have you caring for our community. I also would like to say thank you to our sheriff's department for the fine work that they do every day. When Captain Palomino came to us, she brought with her some really great officers that are assigned here in Lawndale, and I appreciate every single one of them and the job they face daily, even under circumstances of being short-staffed. They work tirelessly to keep us safe and provide us with a sense of security to the best of their ability. Our stats have improved, and I am just so very grateful to once again have a captain who hears and responds to our concerns. To the Lawndale City Council, we have accomplished many things in the past four years that I have been fortunate enough to serve. I wish all of you continued success in leading our community forward. To Congresswoman Maxine Waters, and I haven't seen her come in, there we go. Thank you for caring about Lawndale and the people who serve, who live here. You have helped us accomplish so many things over the years, and I look forward to seeing the new youth center completed that without your help, we couldn't accomplish. To Assemblymember Tina McKinner, thank you for your leadership in Sacramento and for always reminding me that you were a resident of Lawndale and that it was my own dad who first appointed you to a committee. To Supervisor Holly Mitchell and her assistant, Ara An, thank you for always taking the time to make it to all of our events. Ara is always asking and checking in with us to see if there's anything that her office could do to assist us. Taking a moment to look forward, I have been asked many times the last few weeks, "So, Rhonda, what's next?" My answer is this. I will not be one that just disappears. You'll still find me here at council meetings, sitting amongst you. Come and sit with me, any of you. I, I would appreciate the company. I'll still be present at our community events and still look forward to participating in Neighborhood Watch, Coffee with the Cops, and any other events that the public is invited to. Again, it has been an honor and privilege to serve our city for the last eight years, and I look forward to the future for whatever God has in store for me. Thank you. We can't, what, let's not take the time. It's about a celebration. I know.
Let's hear from, um, let's hear from... Our Congressman's office, Congressman Maxine Waters' office. Mr. McLeod, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and guests. Congresswoman Waters is in Washington tonight, but she specifically asked me to join you to present this certificate of special recognition to Councilwoman Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. On the occasion of your retirement, after more than eight years of dedicated government service as both a city council member and city clerk, and in recognition of your unwavering passion for public service and deep love for the city of Lawndale, your commitment to the citizens of this community, inspired by your father's legacy, is truly commendable. I extend congratulations and best wishes as you embark on this new chapter of your life. Maxine Waters, Member of Congress, Forty-Third District of California.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, let's hear from County Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council. It's my honor and delight to be here today. My name is Ara On, and I'm from Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office at L.A. County 2nd District. And Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman, I want to appreciate you. Even the speech that you shared right now, that was really heartfelt. And your father has so much legacy. And I know that you had to sacrifice early on, not just your term, as a council member and city clerk. So we appreciate you. And on behalf of Supervisor Mitchell and entire L.A. County, we want to express gratitude. And I want to read what it says on the scroll. So the scroll says, "In recognition of dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all the residents of Los Angeles County, signed by Supervisor Holly Mitchell." Thank you so much. Thank you so much, council member. Once again, thank you so much. We really appreciate you. And as I wrap up, I also want to appreciate mayor, council member, and the new city council. And we look forward to serving this community as we share the same vision of serving Lawndale together. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. I think we have another presentation. Is that for the councilwoman? Let's hear from the Assemblywoman. Don't take a seat yet. You're next. Let's have a presentation from Assemblymember Tina McKinner. She made her grand entrance. Welcome, welcome. Hello.
Good evening, Lawndale. See, I sound horrible. I've had a cold, so I'm gonna step back a little bit, and I'm not gonna talk too much. But I just wanted to come in and say congratulations to you, mayor, on your elect for being reelected to the city of Lawndale. Thank you for what you do for our city and for our district. And also, Rhonda, on behalf of the State Assembly, I just want to congratulate you on your retirement. You've been a jewel to this city. You've been a jewel to me and to this district. And your father would be proud. I had the privilege of serving on one of your father's committees, and he would be, he's so proud of you. And so I just want to say congratulations. I'm not gonna read this because no one wants to hear my raspy voice. But congratulations from the state of California. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we have a few of my elected officials who have joined us tonight. And just we want to note their presence. Madam City Clerk.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, I would like to apologize in advance if I mispronounce a name or a title. And I would like to apologize profusely if anyone was accident, very accidentally and inadvertently left off my list. We would like to thank the following elected officials for their attendance. Hamilton Cloud, representing Congresswoman Maxine Waters; Assemblymember Tina McKinner; Ara On, representing Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors Holly Mitchell; Los Angeles City Councilmember Heather Hutt; El Cid de Ramos, representing Los Angeles County Assessor Jeffrey Prang; Shirley Rudolph, Board Member, Lawndale Elementary School District; Gloria Ramos, Board of Trustees, Sentinel Valley Union High School District; Estefany Castaneda, Board of Trustees, Sentinel Valley Union High School District; Councilwoman Angie Reyes English, City of Hawthorne; From the City of Inglewood, Mayor James Butts; City Treasurer Angela Allen; City Clerk Ayesha Thompson; City Councilmember Falk; and of course, our most recent Senator Stephen Bradford. We would also like to welcome and thank for her attendance Councilwoman Heather Hutt and Assemblywoman Autumn Burke.
If we missed your name, I can't read your lips. Write it down for me and have somebody to bring it up, and we'd love to introduce you. Can you do that for me? I think I'm. If I'm reading your lips right, you're saying, "Councilmember from the great city of Inglewood, Alex Padilla." See, that was pretty good, huh? That was pretty good. That was pretty good. I think we have one more presentation. We have a presentation from L.A. County. Okay, the L.A. County Sheriff's Department's gonna make a presentation. And the assessor's office, okay. Now, who trumps who? Let's see, let me throw a coin. Let's hear from the assessor's office.
In the fire department? Good evening, Lawndale Council and the city. I'm here on behalf of the assessor, your friend, Jeffrey Prang.
All right, Jeffrey.
He sends his regrets that he couldn't be here this evening. So he sent me with this lovely scroll for Councilwoman Gorman. It says a bunch of wonderful things, and they're all true. I'm not gonna read it, but I just wanted to send thanks from the city of, from the county of Los Angeles and the employees of the county assessor's office to say congratulations and to thank you for all your community service that you have put in.
I can't hear you. I know you said Hugo Rojas. Oh, I don't even know where he's at, but. Yeah, I don't even know where he's at. I don't know his name, though. Okay, now let's hear from the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. Nobody gave me a list.
Mayor, council, staff, good evening. My name is Julian Stern. I served the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, South Los Angeles Station. In addition to that, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Association of Los Angeles County Sheriff's Deputies. On behalf of our 8,000 members, we would like to recognize the councilwoman for her years of service and thank her. So we have this plaque. Association for Los Angeles Deputy Sheriffs, Councilmember Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, City of Lawndale. In appreciation for your years of service, unwavering dedication to the community and collaboration with South Los Angeles Sheriff's Station, we deeply appreciate your support and commitment to public safety. December 16, 2024. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations to those of you reelected and newly elected. We look forward to working with all of you, and we look forward to continue to work with you, councilwoman. Thank you.
You might as well stay right there. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lieutenant Ricky Osborne. I am the lieutenant of South L.A. Sheriff's Station that's assigned to the city of Lawndale as a service area lieutenant. I had the pleasure of working South L.A. Lennox Sheriff's Station since 2001 as a deputy. I worked for Rhonda's father when he was the mayor of Lawndale, when I was in Lawndale as a deputy. And I returned two more times, sergeant, and now lieutenant. So I've worked with Rhonda for many years. So South L.A. Sheriff's Station wanted to give you a plaque from the station itself that many people don't get unless you worked at the station. So I'll read the plaque. It says, "Appreciation Award Presented to Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, Lawndale City Councilmember. Thank you for your support to South L.A. Sheriff's Station. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, December 2020 through December 2024." And I'm sure my phone will still ring at night and on the weekends when you call me.
And now let's hear from the L.A. County Fire Department. So you guys got the hang of it. You knew it was in the queue. See how that works? Got the hang of it. All right, let's do this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Councilmember Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, Assistant Chief Kane, Community Service Liaisonary Rosemary Vivero, we would like to thank you for your more than 30 years of dedicated service and passion for public service. You come from a long family of deeply involved in local government assistance and participation. The passion for serving the community runs deeply and definitely in your heart. Community safety has always been your number one priority, and we will definitely keep pushing that APRU forward with the Los Angeles County Fire Department and of course, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's as our partners. It has been our honor working with you here in the city of Lawndale as well as enjoying special times with the contract city dinners and events throughout the city. We would like to present you with a small token of appreciation from the Los Angeles County Fire Department.
We wanted to be a little different.
Uh-oh.
Because I figure your proclamations are gonna have a coffee stain on it anyway, so. So this year, I don't know if you know, but it was our Fire Department's centennial. We just celebrated it, so we want to keep you hydrated.
Look at that, ooh.
I'm not done yet. Hold on one more second. We also have this beautiful, when you come to your meetings, it's a little ledger with the book from the Fire Department. So that's for you. And the last but not least, this is for you to hand her.
This is, it's a tradition within the fire service and a lot of paramilitary organizations to have a challenge coin. So we brought you a challenge coin from the Los Angeles County Fire Department.
Can we have a picture?
Yeah.
No, that's gonna give it to me.
We gonna wait on you guys. Okay, I also want to acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Hugo Rojas from the Sentinel Valley Union High School District. Okay, with that being the case, we'll move our agenda to item eight. Oh, you got, yes. Oh, you want to be formal by hitting the button?
Yeah, because I don't use it.
Okay, okay. There you go.
That's what I say to Rhonda. It's been an honor and a privilege.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And I know you're not retiring. And I know in two years, you may be on the ballot again. But within those two years, Dina and Randall save a seat next to you because Rhonda be sitting there, and I'll see you again in 2026. And at that time, you'll be giving all these plaques and awards back to these people because you'll be reelected. Thank you, Robert.
I just want to say thank you. We ran together in 2020, and we made it for four years. I don't think this is the end of your journey. You're gonna be starting a new chapter pretty soon. I'm pretty sure in two years. And you know you could count on me. And we've known each other for a while because of the kids. So words can't. I could keep going, but you know how I feel.
I do know how you feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Rhonda, I just want to say I know that serving is in your blood. You got it from your dad. And I know that I'm gonna count on you to hold us accountable. And I think that's very important. So I just want to say I loved serving with you because I thought you were always very thoughtful in your thought process. And I do look forward to seeing you and holding us accountable in our jobs. And thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move to item eight on my agenda, which is the City of Lawndale General Election, Municipal Election 2024 Declaration of Results. Let's hear from the city clerk. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Yvette Palomo, Assistant City Clerk. This report is to provide the official general municipal election results. On November 5, 2024, the city council conducted its general municipal election for the offices of mayor, one seat, and city council member, two seats. For mayor, there were three candidates, Robert Pollan Miles, Bernard Lourdes Suarez, and Wanza Tolliver. For city council member, there were three candidates, Shirley Cuevas, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, and Francisco M. Talavera. The canvas of the election returns is complete, and the results are as follows. Robert Pollan Miles was elected mayor for the full term of two years. And Shirley Cuevas and Francisco M. Talavera were elected as members of the city council for the full term of four years. Staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number CC-2412-109 reciting the fact of the general municipal election held on November 5, 2024. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the city clerk's report? What is the pleasure of this body concerning?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made by Suarez that we accept the city clerk's report and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? CNN with the council, please vote. Madam City Clerk. There we go. See, we got this new fancy system, Mr. Mayor. Where do you go?
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
I was looking for the applause sign, but we usually had one, but I guess we're doing some renovations in the back, so. Okay, Madam City Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
Next, we have the installation of elected officials. So.
How would you like to proceed?
For this installation. we will install the mayor first, followed by Councilmember Cuevas, who will then be followed by Councilmember-elect Talavera. For Mayor Pullen Miles, the oath of office will be presented by his daughter, Samara Lena Pullen. Samara Lena Pullen is Robert's second-oldest daughter. She is a college student pursuing her dream of becoming an aesthetic nurse. She loves being of service to the community and is a great community leader. She helps out with the community whenever she can and loves to support her dad and her family. Samara is very thankful for this opportunity. She is also very outgoing, intelligent, caring, very passionate about her goals, and strives to help anyone she can.
Thanks back for her mother.
Someone said she got that from her mother. I had nothing to do with it, I guess.
Do I start? Okay.
The execution of this oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California. Repeat after me. Uh... Okay. Oh, put your right hand up. Sorry, I'm new to this, guys. I...
It's not as if I haven't done this before, right?
I, Robert Pullen Miles, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution...
I, Robert Pullen Miles, do solemnly affirm that I will...
Support and defend... The Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will...
And that I will...
Well and faithfully discharge these duties upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Do you know what the title is?
Whatever title you would like.
Just signing some mortgage papers. Yes, I don't sign yet.
He's always...
I'll sign here. I gotta do it twice? She's going to need two forms of ID.
Yes.
Ooh, at least two forms. Thank you.
Thank you.
So first, I want to start off this special occasion with, you know, I usually don't have, you know, whatever, right? But I want to start this special occasion with thanking my daughter, Samara, for doing the oath of office for me. It really means a lot. And I'm really proud of you, a boy. She was actually more competent than me. And I really appreciate, uh... Samara, she's my... I know she says she's my second-oldest, I don't know where that came from. But she's my middle daughter, I guess. It is second-oldest, or whatever. This is a more fancy second-oldest, you know, instead of middle daughter, or whatever. But whatever. But I'm really proud of you. Thank you for advancing for my oldest. Because, you know, I was thinking of who can do the oath, or what have you, right? And so it's really all about developing our youth. As you know, here in the city of Landale, we're developing a youth development center. And it's about giving the youth opportunities, right? And as they say, it all starts at home, right? Giving your youth, giving the children your life opportunities or what have you. And so I thank you for stepping up. Yeah, I would love to do that, or what have you. I think you kind of enjoyed that, you know, whatever. Which is okay. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and for your unwavering support of not only this recent election, but throughout the years as I served mayor here in the city of Landale. I want to recognize, of course, you saw my family here. Right, Lena, Lena Pullen. The young... I guess she would be my third-oldest. Sienna Pullen, my third-oldest daughter. Sienna Pullen. Of course, we have my oldest daughter, who could be with us here tonight, but she's watching live. Shad A. Pullen. And I want to thank you guys for your support. Because I couldn't do this without the support of my family. Because, as you know, all my colleagues in the business know that we spend a lot of time away from home to get services and what have you. But we do because we love what we do. We love doing what we do. Oh, oh, wait a minute.
Now, you know I'm a former rapper, right? And you gave me the mic. Now, you know you're in trouble. But I want to thank my family for all of their support, for allowing me to be here tonight. Also, hell, with me tonight, my mother-in-law... It's not every day... You're glad your mother-in-law is here. But I... But I love my mother-in-law. And she's always at all events or what have you. You know? And she rolls with her sister. My aunt... Your sisters, right? I know Aunt Lois, but you're still a sister, right? Okay, you rolled with her sister. My auntie-in-law, Aunt Lois, thank you for being here. Reverend Dr. Whitaker. Thank you for being here as well. But I want to thank also... You know, when I started in this business, the person who really pushed me, she's not here today, and she was late Senator Jenny Orpeza. She helped me get on the City Council and made a space for me to do what I wanted to do and how I wanted to serve, even though I had a demanding job as a staffer. And I want to thank her continuously. But I want to thank my two... See, I got three... Well, four women are always trying to tell me what to do. I got a boss that tells me what to do. She's female as well. She's the Honorable Counselwoman Heather Hood from the city of L.A. By the way, she's newly elected, the first African-American female to represent the 10th district in L.A. But before she was telling me what to do, I had another boss that was telling me what to do. And she's the Honorable Adam Burke, Assembly Member, 62nd Assembly District. And I want to thank you for being here as well. I'm going to wrap this up in about five more minutes, maybe 10. But I want to thank everyone for your friendship, for being here. I want to thank the Landale's Employees Union for their support, as well as the carpenters. Carpenters are in the House. Yeah. But most importantly, I want to thank the residents here in the city of Landale for all of their support and their commitment. It started off in 20... I'm going to try to remember this while I look at my notes. In 2004, where you trusted me to be your councilmember, and you elected me as a councilmember. I'm going to see if somebody can do the math in a minute. And then in 2014, you elected me as the mayor of the city of Landale and trusted me with the city business and resident business in 2014. And now, today, I have the honor of taking, I believe this is my sixth oath of office as mayor. But I couldn't have done it without the support of the voters and without the support of the residents. So I want to thank all the residents for just having faith in me, for always just giving me that push, saying that you can do it. And for always just lending me... A lot of my so-called good ideals, I'll tell you a little secret, they didn't really come from me. They didn't really come from me. They come from listening to the residents. When we did the Landale Way, we named 147 off of Landale Way, that was a resident. They spoke to me, said he noticed that we don't have a street named after the city of Landale, throughout the whole... But everyone else has a street in their city named after their town. And so we named that Landale Way. Someone was mentioning that we need to continue to develop our... We don't have the same opportunities in some communities for our youth. So we came up with the idea of having a youth development center. And by the way, talking about a youth development... Youth Development Center, that started off with $4 million seed from the state assembly from Assemblywoman Adam Burke. Right? And so we're going to make that happen. I forgot about that. I forgot about that. I forgot about that. And then the Congresswoman joined us, gave us $4 million. I wondered, who's going to step up for $4 million? Who do I got for $4 million? Who do I got for $4 million? Hold on, I'm coming. I'm getting close. 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 There we go, there we go, there we go. But I want to wrap it up. I want to thank everyone for coming out. And I look forward to continue to serve the city of Landale, our residents, our business community. Pray that we continue to prosper in the city of Landale. You have my commitment that I will continue to put Landale first. I will continue to fight some of these fights. I got some friends that own certain boards or what have you. And they know I fight, but we still friends, right? And we still get things done or what have you. I'm not going to name out any agencies or what have you. You know? But we'll continue to fight to represent the city of Landale. Thank you so much. God bless the city of Landale. God bless y'all.
Where we go from here?
Next? For Councilmember Cuevas, who's next up, the oath of office will be presented by her husband, Jose Angel Cuevas. Please come to the podium.
Before I begin, I want to acknowledge someone that's no longer with us, who played a pivotal role in the mentorship of my wife, Shirley Cuevas. Raymond El Cordova, which some of you may know, was a mentor to my wife and a mentor and a friend to many of you in this room. He, four years ago, at the height of COVID, over Zoom, administered the oath of office to my wife Shirley Cuevas, you know, on a whim, running. And he said, "We're going to win this," and we did. Sadly, he passed away early this year. And one of his goals to live longer was to administer the oath in person in the city of Landale, where, you know, Shirley has grown. So rest in peace, Raymond Cordova.
I, Shirley N. Cuevas, do solemnly swear...
I, Shirley Cuevas, solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
I sign up top?
All right. Robert was a tough act to follow. I wasn't expecting to speak. Thank you, everybody, all of our residents. Thank you for trusting me with the city for another four years and representing you. It means a lot. First of all, thank you to my husband, who puts up with me coming home late or canceling certain events that we have to attend. Thank you to my son, who made a trip from nearby to be here. My daughter Kiara couldn't be here, but I thank her because she's also watching. And to my parents, who have supported me throughout my life, basically my career. Muchas gracias por todo lo que han hecho. Muchas gracias por todo lo que han hecho. I'm speechless. I just hope that in the next four years, we can move the city forward and that you trust us with some of the decisions that we will make. But we also want to hear from you. So please come and join Rhonda, Rondell, and Dina here at the chambers. We'd like to hear you guys. Andrew, we also want you here. So just please come and join us at our council meetings. Muchas gracias a todos los residentes de Landale por haber confiado los últimos cuatro años por mí. Y espero que los próximos cuatro años sean un poquito mejor. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, and for Councilmember-elect Talavera, the oath of office will be presented by the Reverend Joshua B. Canales. Please come to the podium.
Mayor, City Council, dignitaries, and everyone here in the city, it's my great honor and privilege to represent the great Mission Ebenezer Family Church, where Frank Talavera serves as one of our pastors over our families and couples ministry. And so he and his family are near and dear to my heart and the heart of our great community here in the South Bay. And I hear that Landale is the heart of the South Bay. And so congratulations to everyone. And congratulations to you, Mayor, for your reelection. And Councilmember Cuevas, felicidades. If I may, I would like to read something before I lead Francisco Talavera in the oath. And it says this. "May the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob be with you wherever you go and in whatever you do. May the Lord grant you the courage of King David and the peace of Solomon. The grace of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ may it be upon you in everything that you do. May the anointing of the Holy Spirit saturate your every word and thought. May your actions be weighed on the scales of justice. And may the Lord give you wisdom to balance your demanding schedule of life, prioritizing your family, your wife, your family, ministry, civic duty, and your testimony above all." Congratulations. Place your right hand over the Bible and repeat after me. I, Francisco Talavera,
I, Francisco Talavera,
do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies
against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
that I will bear truth
that I will bear truth
faith
faith
and allegiance
and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion
and that I will and that I will
that I will
well and faithfully
well and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties
upon which
upon which
I'm about to enter
I'm about to enter
Amen.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Let me take a picture. Look, I'm going to be short. Robert, I thought you were a Pentecostal pastor or something. Once they give us the mic, we don't want to let it go. But I want to just thank everyone for this opportunity. And I just want to take the words of the pastors for such a time as this. This is my second time in politics, in city government. First, I did a round or a term in as Santa Ana Valley School Board member. So I'm happy to be here. And I just want to say thank you to my wife and my family for always supporting me and being here with me. My wife was saying, after she heard all the accolades from Rhonda, "Don't forget, you got a wife." So I said, "Okay, sweetheart." So I just want to... But I want to thank everybody. It's always been my long-life wish to serve the city. And we have a lifelong person leaving and a lifelong person coming in. So I've been here in the city of Londo for all my years, 63 years. I went to Jane Addams when it was K through 8. I went to Londo High School, El Camino, and then Dominguez. So I've been in the city of Londo since 1961, when I was born, on 154th Street, where... Thank you. It was my grandparents' home. It was my parents' home, where they raised us. And it's our home, my wife and I, Mabel, where we raised our three adult children now. So we've been in Londo for a long time, and I love the city. So thank you very much.
Let's welcome to the dial for the first time, Councilmember Frank Talavera. Okay, before we break, I want to acknowledge two former elected officials from the Los Angeles City Council. Jan Perry is here. She may have just stepped out. And we got Tyrone Smith from the West Basin Municipal Water District is here as well. Thank you for coming. Good day. So what's next, Madam City Clerk? Should we take an intermission? All right.
You're the boss.
You're doing this?
No, 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 we're doing an intermission. We're doing an intermission. Then we'll come back and do the business. Okay, at this point, we will break for intermission slash reception.
You get cake. All right.
All right.
Is there cake? There's food, too. I don't remember. There's cake and food. 20 minutes.
Is the Sheriff Department still here?
They're outside.
Okay, we have the... Yeah, um... Mike went out there.
I guess there's no sheriffs.
Okay, we're gonna skip that. Okay, we're gonna move our agenda. We're gonna move on to oral communications. We're now on oral communications. We have opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda if you'd like to do so. We ask you to do so at this time. Please approach the podium. In about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Let's have our first speaker.
This is Holly Osborne from one block outside of Longdale in Redondo. And I didn't know... Actually, it's appropriate that I am doing this tonight because I've got more drawings, and Rhonda always told me she liked my drawings, and I thank her for that. So, anyway, I'm Holly Osborne. I usually talk about the Green Line, but no more, because there is no longer a Green Line extension, and there is, in fact, no longer a Green Line through El Segundo and terminating at the Redondo Station on Marine Avenue. It's now called the K Line, and the color is pink, okay? And I showed you a slide. And this configuration has only been around for about one month. But now, how it affects me is it takes a three-seat ride to get to the airport... I mean, to get to the Metro meetings downtown, but no increase in ticket price. Okay, now, this K Line was copied exactly as it is from the Metro charts, but I added two things. There's extensions at the north, extensions at the south. The extension to the south is the former Green Line extension. Now, it's the K Line southern extension. You should also, if you look at the next page, you see the three options of the northern extension, and they're 10, 8, and 6 miles, and they are all underground. That's very long for an underground LRT system. If you recall back in 2018 at the Metro meeting downtown, Mayor Garcetti promised that Metro would study an underground option for the Green Line through Longdale. This was to preserve the green space and the row in Longdale, among other things. The length in question would have been less than two miles. That never happened. We were told it would cost too much, even for only two miles, and in effect, we were not worth it. Even Torrance, as a few months ago at one of their Transportation Committee meetings, said it was too bad there was no underground option. But now, I want to look at the comparison of the cost of the K Line, southern and northern, that's on this page, and the southern... If you do it in cost terms of cost per mile, the row option, it was .49 billion cost per mile, the Hawthorne .66. But the K Line northern extensions are more than two and three times that. So are Hawthorne elevated? Is too expensive when this is what they're doing for the K Line northern extension? So, and much has been made of the priceless importance of trees and green spaces, especially neighborhoods that are park-poor and dense. A row option for LRT would destroy the green space. So I'm going to ask all the distinguished members in the audience to please support the Hawthorne Boulevard option and not the row, and as Assembly McKinner has done, and the cities of Longdale, Redondo, and Hawthorne, and I made it in under three minutes.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Dina Longdale resident, I just want to say, I'm not gonna exactly address you guys, I just want to thank Rhonda for her service and how she has been very active in public safety, getting us our Alpers cameras, really pushing the neighborhood watch, which has a nice turnout. We hope to get more people coming out for that, and of course, fighting the fireworks issue as we all do every year. But, and I also want to say congratulations to everybody. Great talking to you, Frank. We need to catch up. And I want to just say Merry Christmas, and we will see you in the new year. We'll have some more issues, I'm sure. But anyway, take care.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm Annette Owens. I'm a homeowner in Longdale. And as a longtime homeowner, I was surprised to hear, did not hear, an update from the fire department at the last meeting about the house fire a few weeks ago. And there was another fire a few weeks after that. And that's really scary. While we keep all the families that are affected in prayer, I'm concerned, because Longdale is a very densely packed city, and I worry that perhaps our electrical wiring codes are, in fact, too lenient. I'm assuming that's the case, because the home that burned was hopefully up to Longdale City code, and it would be very awkward if it wasn't, right? Also, I know that firsthand, not being up to code can really keep insurance companies from paying on repairs. My home was built in the 1930s, and when we bought it, we had to do a lot of expensive retrofitting to keep it safe. The electrician who came out said that the old knob and tube wiring is a serious fire hazard for a home full of modern electronics, including computers and heaters and televisions. So we went through that expense. I simply want to know, if I should be concerned about my own home or my neighbor's homes, I would never want to have any family, especially with children, affected by a preventable home fire, which, in our neighborhood, could easily spread to other homes that are only 10 or 20 feet away. So I'm hoping to hear from the fire department and also from our code enforcement folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi there. My name's Andrew Blackney. I'm a resident of Longdale. I like to communicate this little tidbit of simple information to the city council in hopes that you guys will use this information to inform your decision about the path forward with the 147th Traffic Study Recommendations and road design on that street in general. So first, let me just start off by saying, driving, it's a subconscious activity. It's if, if we drove with 100% of our attention on what we're supposed to do, everyone would get to work completely exhausted every single morning. No one is capable of doing all the things that are required for driving all at once. You can't look at your speed, look at the speedometer, adjust your speed to match the speed of the, of the speed limit of the street while trying to maintain your lane, while trying to look out for road hazards, while trying to also get to your destination. Instead, what we do as humans is, we do, is we do one or two of those things every second, and in conglomerate, we get to our destination, we say, eh, that was safe enough. Now, good city planning should try and design roads that implicitly has, forces you to drive the speed limit. When you see a nice wide-open road, it's implicitly telling you, it's okay to go 50 miles an hour here. This is why freeways are nice, wide, and straight. They're not 10, they're not tiny 10-foot-wide lanes with a bunch of curves. Now, 147th Street is designed more like a bowling lane than it is like a residential road. There's not a lot of, a lot of drivers using this, so you have a lot of, a lot of space to maneuver around. The street's also wide, so you can do that maneuvering. The only thing left in this analogy is, where are the bowling pins? And I hope to God drivers don't start seeing the cyclists and pedestrians that use this road as those bowling pins. And this isn't my analogy. This is the analogy from the former Public Works Director Ahmad Ansari. This is the analogy from the former Public Works Director, Ahmad Ansari. So, the city should adopt the recommendations in the traffic study and reduce the lanes here from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction, and install protected bike lanes, which just so happened to very well align with the South Bay Cogs Local Travel Network, and would also be a great benefit for the students that use this road to get to school, because Lusinger High School is right there. So, I hope that the council will take this information and apply it, and give the residents the safety they need, the students the safety they need, and invest in the future of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Ray Holler, Longdale homeowner in southwest Longdale and retired aerospace engineer. Honorable mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, special guests, and distinguished attendees, congratulations to the elected officials. I'm gonna talk about the Metro Green Line Extension to Torrance, now called K Line Southern Extension to Torrance, as Dr. Osborne explained. And I'm gonna talk about the state and federal funding and ridership, since I like getting good value for my money, especially taxpayer money. My summary is, the Hawthorne Boulevard option is the best value, since its cost per rider is lower than the hybrid row option. To get the taxpayer best value, Hawthorne Boulevard option may require federal funds. I ask your help convincing Metro to pursue more cost-effective, higher ridership projects, because apparently, Metro pays no attention to me. And I hope that the mayor can use some of the fundraising raising charm he displayed tonight, as well as others of you who could try to work with the officials, most of whom have left now, but, you know, it's clear that the city has a very good relationship with, and I'm grateful for that. So, now, I'm gonna talk about a bunch of details. Thanks to all of you for working hard to get fair treatment by Metro upon the city of Longdale. Longdale supports the Hawthorne Boulevard option, which would run along the noisy previous home of the red car, streetcar, instead of running through the quiet, green, open freight train right-of-way or row in our neighborhood, where for years, only two freight trains have run daily along the row. Thanks also to our chief, our California State Assembly Representative Tina McKinnon, who was here for supporting the Hawthorne Boulevard option. Sadly, in Maine, the Metro Board of Directors voted to approve proceeding to final EIR and naming the hybrid row option as the locally preferred alternative with almost no discussion, so we were left to guess why they voted the way they did. My guess is mostly about cost. So, going back to costs, since I'm running out of time here, personally, I'm a, okay, a big advocate for higher ridership. But as Metro, did you know that despite the recovery of most of the ridership lost due to COVID, now up to a million rides per day? A decade ago, ridership was 50% higher, a one and a half million rides per day, despite billions of taxpayer money spent since. Seems to me that higher ridership projects, options should be sought, and I tell the Metro Board about that every month in person. Hawthorne Boulevard option is forecast to have 35% higher ridership than row options and has lower cost per rider, which is also better. I claim that the Hawthorne Boulevard option, which would cost only 10% more than hybrid row, and to build and to get that extra 35%, a good deal. So, I hope that you will help with their funding plans, since they think they only need state funds, but will probably need federal funds for either option, and they're saying that they'll need it for Hawthorne Boulevard option. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want to thank those who had the opportunity to speak on the public comments. Let's bring to the dialysis for any comments from the council. Let's hear from Councilwoman Quavis.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and presenting or speaking. Dr. Osborne, thank you again for the charts, and I agree that they shouldn't have changed the name. They should have kept it Green Line, not K Line. And I do see the value of putting more money on the Southern Extension. I have been driving through the Northern Extension tunnel... Not tunnels, but over the tunnels on La Brea and Wilshire, and it's been like that now for three years. And they still haven't finished the Underground Tunnel. They're barely, I think, they're about six to seven months before they put a building on top of that. I would like to see the tunnel on the Southern part, too, which means it's gonna take at least 10 years for us to get a tunnel out here, but it's the least expensive option that they have. Thank you for your chart. That will be all for now.
Okay. Councilmember Frank Talavera. Talavera. Talavera, I'll have it in a few minutes.
I'd just like to welcome everyone and thank you for coming out. It's an honor to be the newly-elected council member, and I want to say that I'm gonna do my best. I just spoke to Rhonda Little, and I'm very in tune to the Hoffman legacy.
Councilman, hit that button for me right there.
Okay, all right. Now, I'm gonna... Now, I'll start again.
Now, you're cooking.
All right. So, I just want to say thank you for everyone who came out, and as your newly-elected council member, I, like I said, I'm well aware of the Hoffman legacy, and I want to thank Rhonda for all her years of service also. And, but I want to take that line that the pastor led for such a time as this, okay? So, I believe that God calls us to different things in life, and when we have to do that, then that's what... Being a City Council member has always been a dream of mine, but it just wasn't the right time. But now is the time. So, I'm here, and I'm proud to be here. In the reference that the lady made about the house fire that was not reported, well, unfortunately, that was my house. So, but I... But the experience that we had of our wonderful neighbors, how they all came out, because we ran out at 4:30 in the morning with only our pajamas on. So, but our neighbors rallied around us. Some brought us hot tea, some brought us hot cocoa, some brought us coffee, some... One of the neighbors came out with blankets for all of us. And so, to be here now on this board is, to me, is something special, because I see the warmth and the love and the genuine care that Longdale residents have for each other. So, I hope that every street in our city is devoted and is loving as ours is. So, I just want to thank everybody for that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Pat Kearney.
Okay, I want to thank everybody that came up to speak tonight. Holly and Ray, you know we're on board with the Metro. We haven't given up the fight. It used to be the C Line. No, Green Line, then C Line, now K Line. Dina, now it's gonna be the three Caballero... Two Cabal... One Caballero and two Caballeros up down there. And with that, Annette, I think Councilman Talavera already mentioned his house fire, so with that, I'll pass it on.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Suarez.
Just want to thank everybody that came out, and I really do want to say thank you, because all of you that come up, you hold this accountable, and that's huge for the city. I do want to congratulate Frank, welcome aboard, and congratulations on the, both the mayor and Shirley, on your reelection. And then, just a few things... Oh, thank you, Ray and Holly, for being strong advocates for, you know, fighting for... Against the Green Line, K Line, Pink Line, whatever it is these days. But no, thank you, and we do... It's helpful for us, because staff sees it, and they use that in part of our fight against them and document those, the facts and information that you give us. And then, I did want to follow up and see, with regards to the Local Travel Network, can we agendize that? The last subcommittee meeting that we had, we agreed that to push it forward, and it got held for some reason, so I'd like to see that come back, so the council can look at it. If we need to have another subcommittee meeting, I'm fine with that, and maybe we can take into consideration some of the residents' concerns about 147th. And with that, I'll pass it along, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I want to thank those who had the opportunity to speak as well. I want to congratulate, of course, Frank and Shirley as well on their election. And I want to say, of course, on the Green Line slash C Line slash K Line, definitely still in the fight, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. And particularly, the financing gap, the 10%, I think if they have the political will, you always can find the money, once you have the political will, right? So, it's always the political will and the money, because the money is always there. Money is just... Money is just money, right? And so, it's the political will to spend the money or what have you that we have to press upon a Metro to come up with the 10%, so that we can have that, the Green Line, K Line, Hawthorne Boulevard. I'm gonna suggest that we, perhaps, communicate with our elected officials to see if they can come up with any ways of funding such. I do know Supervisor Holly Mitchell had made an inquiry into the federal system for additional funding, particularly for Hawthorne Boulevard, because she understands that gap. So, perhaps if we can make an inquiry with the state and other federal officials and our senator, United States Senator, you know, as well, maybe we can shake the trees a little bit more to kind of help them along, to show them possibly where the money could come from in terms of closing that gap. So, if we can take a look at that, I appreciate that. And with that, that's all I have. We will move our agenda. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the items on the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Kearney that we approved the Consent Calendar and seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the Consent Calendar motion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the vote.
For the Consent Calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item is... Item 10 is our annual reorganization of the City Council. Let's hear the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Now is the time for the annual reorganization of the City Council. At this time, the mayor can call for nominations and reelect a new mayor pro tem to serve from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025. Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, we do have a staff report to give you kind of a, as a council member, an ideal of those who've served in the most recently. But with that, let's have a motion. Who feels like this?
Nomination?
Yeah, nomination.
I would, in keeping with tradition, I would like to nominate Councilmember Pat Kearney to serve as a mayor pro tem for the year of 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the motion's being made that we nominate Mr. Pat Kearney to serve as mayor pro tem and seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? I guess we probably need an official vote on this one. Let's go ahead and take a vote. Madam City Clerk.
For item number 10, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, congratulations to Mr. Pat Kearney.
Oh, thank you.
You up? Okay, now, let's look at my calendar. Okay, next item is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Couple updates. With staff and I, we attended the Green Line meeting at the Galleria. We did meet with the Metro staff. They presented. They did forewarn us that the final EIR will be coming out the second quarter of 2025, so we'll be bird dogging that. I did ask a couple of questions concerning, you know, the power purchasing agreement, because they are electrifying it with SCE Power. And as the council all knows and the city attorney, we have a franchise agreement with Edison. So, they didn't have any answers on that. I did ask them, so that was interesting. I did also reach out to the Metro person, because the council had asked this, and I'd sent you all an email. There's an opportunity to expand the Longdale beat. I've talked to Jason. We're meeting with Metro representatives at the main hub there at LAX. So, that would be a good spot to maybe look at expanding our Longdale beat. So, that would be something that we'd be looking at, meeting with Metro staff to discuss that. I just want to give you a forewarning to the council. We have a whole list of items coming in January, and I'm not supposed to talk of things in the future agenda, but I'll be brief. We have, well, we have the one that the mayor pro tem, Bernadette Suarez, just mentioned, Councilwoman, and we're gonna put that item on Local Travel Network, but I want to, the fencing issue. We're also bringing forward several of the other big items, like the items with the software system. I need to get it addressed with the council. It's a big issue that we've been experiencing internally. We're gonna bring that for you. And a couple of other items that I just want to give you a heads-up on. And I want to also give a shout-out to former, our Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman. It was great serving with her and working with her. She has the heart of the committee, and I thank you for those kind words. I look forward to working with Mr. Talavera, our new councilperson, so look forward to working forward and moving forward on things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, while we're researching going to the LAX, can we also maybe look at a summer, or maybe they go to... It goes to the beach? That might be nice for the summer, like temporarily.
Most certainly. Then we definitely could do that.
So, I think that kind of clarified what my question was gonna be. So, this would be an actual stop at LAX, actually inside LAX, or the peripheral, or...
We have to look into it. They have some kind of new transportation hub that they're gonna be finishing up with the Auto People Mover.
Right.
And I saw this opportunity, and I thought I would reach out to them, based on council's direction, and they're interested. They've already reached out. So, it would be somewhere in that hub by the Auto People Mover that they're gonna be near, I think, finishing up 2025. So, this would be an ample opportunity, but I also agree that we should look at other ways to expand the service. I've talked to Jason, the CSD Director, about what we can do.
And we're still looking into extending it to El Camino, right?
Of course. Oh, and then, one other thing, Mayor and Council, before I go. I'm glad that Metro did give that information that we have, because it just shows the piecemeal argument we've been arguing for many years on the Metro, Green Line, C Line, whatever. It shows right in the record how it's all connected, just so you know.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that report. Okay, City Manager's Report, next item. If there are any from the council, let's have the items from the council members.
The sheriff is here. Do we want sheriff report?
No sheriff to report.
No? We skipped it?
We passed the sheriff's report. We'll double up next... Unless it's something of major importance, we'll double up next week.
All right.
Next council meeting.
Sometime.
All righty. I attended the City of Longdale Employee Recognition, 2024 Employee Recognition and Holiday Dinner.
Yeah, that's true.
I also attended the Angel Tree Lighting. Where is he? Oh, he's sitting over there. Thank you. It was great. I couldn't stay the entire time, but I heard great feedback, more attendance than previous years, so thank you very much for a great event again. I also attended Supervisor Holly Mitchell's swearing and ceremony. I attended Hawthorne City Council Member Angie Reyes' swearing ceremony. And I just want to tell everybody, wish everybody a happy holidays and prosperous New Year, and we'll see you January 6th, I believe, at our next council meeting, or first week of January.
Okay. Councilmember Talavera.
Okay, I also attended the Angel Tree Lighting. Jason, thanks. It was marvelous. I actually went over to the skating rink area and almost got a pair of skates on and did some skating myself, but fearing that I would probably break a bone or something, I didn't do it. But it was exciting. I stayed for a while. I saw that the funnel kick line was super long, but everyone was there, and they were excited. The children were, you know, laughing and waiting for their turn to slide down the snow part, the sledding part, so it was great. And I look forward to attending more of the events in Longdale, too. So, thank you, and I wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Okay. Mr. Pat Kearney.
I also attended the City of Longdale Recognition Dinner. It was well-attended. I attended the Angel Tree Lighting, which I already talked to Jason. What a great job he did on that, staff, public health staff and their staff. I attended the senior Christmas lunch, and, you know, we thought we'd have turkey or ham. We had some kind of bowtie pasta, whatever. I did eat it anyway. And then, I attended the Library Trust Oversight, which I always attend about every month. And then, I also attended... And then I also attended the city council knife for Santa's sleigh, which is, really had a great time. And then a heads up, I got a text from today from SC. If you don't know who SC is, that's Santa Claus. I guess he had a wardrobe malfunction Friday at the city yard, and so he left some of his apparel there, and he needed it the next day for an event at a church. So, he wanted me to give, I'm his favorite elf, by the way, in case you're wondering. I am his favorite elf. He wanted me to give a shout out to little Sean, little Lucho, little Jack, little Johnny, little Jesse, and most of all, little Roman. So, I picked up his missing apparel and delivered it to the church on time. He just wanted me to say, tell everybody Merry Christmas, and there will be an extra piece of coal in all your stockings. And to his favorite elf, which is me, I'm getting an extra fire log in my stocking. And so, I wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas from SC. And P.S., don't forget, I think it's the Neighborhood Watch tomorrow night?
Thank you, Councilman Kearney. Tomorrow night is the final Neighborhood Watch of 2024. It will be at the Hoffman Community Center, starting at 6:00 PM. We'll have refreshments and a presentation from LASD on safety during the holidays. And everyone is invited to please come out.
Let's hear from Madam Pro Tem, Oswe.
I also attended the employee recognition dinner. Thank you. We have some employees that have been here over 30 years and so, so that's, that's really nice to celebrate that. I attended the Angel Tree Lighting. Thank you to staff, and I wanted to say I absolutely love the angel on the tree. I, that, that was a nice addition. And I attended also Coffee with a Cop at the Sprouts. It, there seemed to be more employees and sheriff than there were residents, but I think that might have to do with the holiday, so maybe timing-wise, it, it conflicted with everybody's busy schedule. And then I attended the South Bay Cities Council of Government Board of Directors meeting. And I think that's it. I'll pass it along, thanks.
Thank you. I attended the, also attended the Angel Tree Lighting Ceremony. Well-attended, well-put together. My hats off to, to the staff, all the department, community service department, and all the volunteers. You guys just did a bang-up job. I mean, it was, I mean, I liked the new configuration. That was, that was, that was nice to have the tables up front or whatever Jason and his crew put together. And the entertainment was, was on point as well. It was just a really nice, a nice event. I think that was probably, I want to say, that's probably the, in terms of turnout, probably the largest we've probably had in a, in a, in a while. There might even be a record breaker. I'm not, I'm not sure, but that was a great, great turnout. And I do agree with you, the Madam Pro Tem, the, the angel actually on the tree. We've never had the angel on the tree before, right?
It's been around for a while, but I can't think of whether.
I don't think we, yeah, I don't think we actually had the angel on the tree, even though it's always called Angel Tree.
There was more lighting, more lights. That's why we noticed it more.
Not only was there more lighters, to hold, to hold the lights as well, because in time past, you know, we had like some Charlie Brown, I was going to say a Charlie Brown Christmas, right? But that really, really was lovely. It was a really nice event, nice event. I also attended the employees' recognition dinner. That was a nice event to recognize our employees for their, their hard work and dedication to this city and to our residents. And we had a good time, and the food was pretty good as well. And I also attended Supervisor Holly Mitchell's swearing-in ceremony. She's on her third term, and so we look forward to continuing to work with Madam Supervisor Holly Mitchell as well. And that's all I have. And with that, I guess I have to go. I don't know if she doesn't say it on here. No, it doesn't say it on here, so I got to go to the, the old agenda. Okay, with that, we will, we will reconvene this meeting, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council is in January?
6.
January 6th in these council chambers at 6:30 PM. It is now 9:03, we are adjourned. Thank you.